Yeah. Are you ready?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you.
One more across from me.
Oh, they all in there. Oh, really? Oh, my gosh. All the council members are present. I call to order the August 16th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening on the items listed on the closed session agenda. Mr. City Attorney, would you please provide a report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the mayor indicated, the council met in closed session on the items listed on the agenda. No reportable action was taken.
Thank you. We would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Ms. Janelle Derrick. Please go to the mic and...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Derrick. As is noted on our agenda, city council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under item one for public comment, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. The public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council on issues not listed on the agenda. We do ask anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out a request to speak card, which is against the wall, and return it to the clerk. And we accept the request to speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report has been read, we open the item up for public comment. The clerk will announce your name for you to walk to the podium to speak. Now, in front of the clerk, there is a timer. To ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard, we ask that all comments be limited to the specified number of minutes, which is three minutes for tonight. Also in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no flaws or boos, cat calls or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse. Here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Now, this brings us to item one, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. Each person has three minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Guy Stevenson.
I remember on July the 19th, I had a conversation with one of your city council members that said that there was no issues with FIA. That proves that there is. And this also went to the Yellow County grand jury because you people want to give money to FIA that are based out of New York. You need to read this article because you just, you know, I know you two are on that committee, so you guys just want to give money to the transportation committee? Well, I'm trying to put a wrench in that. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is the fact that you people sign up for these committees and these commissions, but what are you doing for the city, seriously, in these different commissions, other than go behind that door over there and talk back there and not share this with the public? You need to start listening to the public. The public is very important to keep you in office. And they, you know, social media is terrible, but you know, I, you know, people can post things about people that are not doing their job. And like I said before, I'm not trying to be mean to you people. It's just that I see over in West Sacramento that you guys sign up for these committees, these commissions and do all this, different committees, different commissions, and you don't do nothing. You go back there and you're all about me, 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 and you're yes people. That's what you are, yes people. You're politicians that are trying to look for power in your positions. It's about power with you people. It's not about, oh, let's talk to the community, let's get their input. It's about your yes people, and you people are about your own political agenda. Let's see how much power I can get in my district to keep me in office. That's what it is. I noticed that there's a lot of things going on over here in West Sacramento that doesn't really, really have a lot of support. I hear all the badmouthing on social media about this, about this people here because they don't listen to the people. You need to start listening to the people because the people are the ones that'll keep you in office. And the other thing that you need to know is, we don't work for you. You work for us. We're taxpayers. Just so you know, I'm not trying to be hateful, but I ain't sugarcoating anything. Just letting you know, maybe you need to read this article about where you just gave $3.6 million to those people and look at what they're doing.
Robin Davis?
Hi, I'm Robin and I live in my 160-square-foot semi-off-grid tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. I wanted to invite the community, council and staff to the Tri-County Home and Garden Show starting this Friday through Sunday, where you can view and tour tiny homes on wheels. Saturday, there will be a presentation on how to legalize tines in our region by Dan Fitzpatrick, the president of the Tiny Home Industry Association, at 2:45 PM. We have VIP tickets for council and staff that would like to attend that I've given to the clerk. Each ticket is good for two people if anyone wants to carpool. So it would be great if maybe David Tilly, our lead planner, who is working on this ordinance to present to the Planning Commission next month, would attend. We'd love to see David there if possible. We also sent out an email to everyone with those details if you'd like to RSVP that way to reserve a ticket at the venue. Sacramento City, Elk Grove and Yuba County are some of those that will be attending and are interested in learning more about tines. Some of the other new counties already working with the Tiny Home Industry Association are Mendocino, Plumas, Mariposa and Sacramento. I'll be at the SACOG meeting tomorrow morning to invite the rest of the region's policy leaders, since the state needs this entire region to contribute on innovative, affordable housing solutions so we can make a greater impact together. KTLA News just reported that housing affordability in California hit a 16-year low in the second quarter of 2023, according to new figures released by California Association of Realtors. These numbers come as interest rates continue to stay above 6% and home prices maintain inflated due to lack of inventory. The data shows that fewer than one in five people, only 16% of people, can afford to purchase a medium-priced, existing, single-family home in California. Those second-quarter numbers are down from 19% in just the first quarter of 2023. As mentioned last council meeting, Yolo County's homeless numbers have also increased. So things are only getting worse, unfortunately, so I'm looking forward to hearing back from the Planning Department on when we will be holding the workshop regarding this ordinance so the community has a chance to give input before this gets presented to Planning Commission next month. Thank you.
Rhonda Pope Flores?
Short, 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 sorry. I would like to thank you, Mayor, for doing the land acknowledgement. But it doesn't mean anything if you don't consult with tribes. Tower, Bridge, Gateway. I have been talking about this since October 19th. I recently asked for the list of the individuals who were consulted and notified. What I find interesting is that on November 3rd, you sent the list, you sent the letter to the residents, but there's something wrong there because according to the October 19th meeting that I accused the City of West Sacramento for a Brown Act violation, your legal counsel sent me a letter on December 2nd saying that no action took place regarding the naming of Tower, Bridge, Gateway. But then you go back to your November 16th meeting and your staff report references the actions on October 19th. Now, here's where it gets worse. I know all of you are well aware that I am a tribal leader. I know I have mentioned it numerous times about consultation. I have said if consultation did not occur, this is illegal. When I got that list, everyone from the school district to Caltrans, to AT&amp;T, to everybody was on that list. But do you want to know who wasn't on that list? No tribes. Now, if you're going to go out of your way to contact Caltrans, state agencies, local agencies, you need to contact tribes. That is a violation. I have said this over and over, I'm not going to let this go. I have asked if tribes were properly consulted, didn't get the answer until I got that list. So I'm letting you know, I have contacted Yoche Dhi, I've contacted Auburn, I've contacted all the tribes that have an interest in Yolo County. And I'm letting them know what is happening here. This better not happen no more because next time, I will have my tribal historic preservation office, I will have my tribal council here, and I'll have my legal council here. You don't get to ignore tribal consultation. It is required, tribal consultation. If you contacted all those agencies, you were required by law to contact our tribes. I find it interesting that your, November 3rd, but the action didn't take place until November 16th, or did it take place in October 19th? If it took place on October 19th, it's a Brown Act violation.
Janelle Derrick?
Hello, City Council. I am your board member for the Sacramento-Yolo County Mosquito Vector Control Board, and I just wanted to come tonight and share a few updates that we've had that are kind of important right now. We've just had the first human case of West Nile virus in Yolo County. We've had three or four of them in the previous couple of weeks in Sacramento. This person in Yolo County is, lives in Woodland and has been hospitalized due to West Nile virus. And I want to share that the Mosquito Vector Control Board examined 336 dead birds to examine them, to see if they died from West Nile virus. And out of that amount, 97 tested positive. And they tested 4,500 contaminated pools or ponds in people's yards, and they came up with 172 positive mosquitoes for West Nile virus. If you see any dead birds, please report them to fightthebite.org, and we will come out and pick them up. We will also come out and inspect your property, your home. If you have mosquitoes flying around, we will test them, and we will spray at no charge. And we can also, if you have a water feature, we can give you mosquito-eating fish that we grow out in Elk Grove just for this purpose. This is quite a fantastic thing. Also, we started, because of this, we started aerial spraying in Davis and Woodland last week, and they project they may have to continue that for a little bit. You get updated text messages and emails for all the spraying flyovers or ground spraying sent to you by going to fightthebite.org and signing up. Let's see. And that is all. Are there any questions?
We can't.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no additional requests to speak.
Thank you. I do want to make a suggestion for city administration to work and have a public service announcement announcing some of the information we heard today for our residents. So take advantage of those opportunities if we have West Nile in our city to figure out how to mitigate that spread. Thank you.
All right, okay.
Next is our consent agenda, item two through nine. I will pull item seven. Are there any other requests to pull an item among our council members? Nope. Okay. Item number seven, and I think this is Mr. Robinson. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I just wanted to get a little bit of background why we have this and then also explain as well.
Background on why we're having this report?
Yes, why we're approving this tonight.
Yeah, so this item arose out of direction that staff received from the council at your strategic planning session in February. It was actually an item on your policy agenda, Strategic Communications Plan Development, I don't remember the title of it, but to the effect of developing a strategic communications plan for the city. And I think the origin of that was a perceived need to enhance the ability of the city to communicate effectively with residents, both from a public safety standpoint and to reinforce the council's commitment to clarity and transparency in the city's communications. So the staff that we have presently is the same size that it's been for decades that I've been here. So, and the city has grown and the complexity of the information environment has grown a great deal. We're competing for brain space with TikTok and the internet and TV and all kinds of things, so the sophistication that's necessary to get the city's messaging across has increased. And so the purpose of this report is to facilitate hiring consultants to help the city develop its messaging and get it out in a way that the residents can uptake and utilize more effectively.
Thank you so much, and thank you for doing it so quickly.
Thanks.
I just want to say, I appreciate the work because I do know that there have been events in the city where we have been asked among our constituents, you know, how are we going to become aware of things? For example, you know, if there's a power outage, where do we get a way to power up our resources? Or how do we find out, you know, if you're not plugged into PG&E alerts, what, you know, what's going to happen next? Or how do we get access to, you know, a blanket, you know, flashlights, food, things like that? And I really appreciate that this is going to provide multi-channel communication, whether it be utilizing text messages, phone alerts, social media, you know, our visual, having visual aids for multiple languages, you know, sometimes it'll be imaging. And we used to have, you know, the streets, you know, signs put up immediately. That was very helpful. I noticed that people took advantage of getting their phones charged up in the rec center. I just want to be able to make sure we have consistent messaging as we move forward and look forward to, you know, some timely updates on the next steps, the rollout, as this is getting implemented. And to the extent that we can incorporate public input to make sure that what we're distributing as far as messaging, what we've heard a lot is, you know, what, you know, how come Davis has a shelter in place and we don't? And they have that text messaging to work with our law enforcement agencies, our first responders, so that our community is safe.
Right.
And that is really, I think, a standard that's been set on us as an expectation, and we are so grateful that, you know, we are approving this tonight to meet that, you know, request among our constituents from various angles. So thank you so much for your work and looking forward to this partnership. Any other comments or feedback? Yes, Mayor Potemorosco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo what Madam Mayor mentioned, and just to reiterate that this was a council priority, I think it was unanimous amongst all council members when we met for our strategic planning session. And just wanted to clarify that this was, this was something we had discussed and anticipated as part of our regular budget process, but we're seeing it here tonight. Is that fair to say?
Right. Yeah, we had, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
No.
No, we, yeah, we had, we had a decision package that was included in your budget discussion, and then there was a, there was a mistake that incurred internally at the staff level, and the numbers from that decision package did not make it into the actual budget that you approved, so we need to come back and have you do that separately.
Thank you. I know that there have been multiple inquiries that we all have been receiving, so I think this is a really good step in the right direction.
And, you know, on our website as well. Anyway, we can spruce that up a little bit.
Absolutely.
To help prove that is, thank you. Thank you so much. And with that, I'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on consent items.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. I'll accept a motion.
Samud?
I'll take seconds.
Mayor Potemorosco moved, and council member Early seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Silpizio-Hull?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Potemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right. These items are approved. Thank you. We have no public hearing agenda items, and next is item 10 under the regular agenda under City Manager's Office, consideration of resolution 23-67, proposed changes to fiscal years 2223, 2224, and 2224 to 2225, benefit summaries for unrepresented employee groups, updates to the publicly available pay schedule for fiscal year 2223, 2224, and updates to the authorized position list for fiscal year 2223, 2224.
That's a mouthful. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you tonight is consideration of proposed changes to the benefit summaries for the unrepresented groups at the city. That's our specialists and professionals, our confidential, our management, our safety management, our executive management and city council. Approval of the updated classification plan for fiscal year 2324, approval of the updated authorized position list for fiscal year 2324, and adoption of resolution 2367 approving related budget adjustments. As council has already considered the changes in closed session and blessed approach, normally an item such as this would just be placed on the consent agenda for approval, but due to this item containing salary and benefit changes for department heads, the Brown Act requires an oral report summarizing recommended changes prior to the council taking final action on the item. Thus, in summary, the recommended salary and benefit changes that apply to all unrepresented groups, including the department heads, include changes that are effective the first pay period after council adoption, which is a 3% salary increase. In addition, a one-time non-perceval lump sum payment equivalent to the amount of 2% of annual base pay, and a one-time non-perceval lump sum equivalent payment of the general salary increase and equity adjustments retroactive to the pay period inclusive of July 1, 2023, effective January 1, 2024. There's an increase, health contribution to the flat dollar amount from 905 to 1075 for employee only, from 1358 to 1822 for employee plus one, and from 1773 to 2377 for employee plus two or more. That continues to be payment of premiums up to the premium amount by the city, including dental and vision. Effective July 1, 2024, there's an additional 3% salary increase and a one-time non-perceval lump sum equivalent in the amount of 2% of annual base pay. And effective January 1, 2025, there's another increase to the health contribution where each of the tiers will increase by $100. Opt-out for both medical in 2023, in 2024 and 2025 remains the same. Other changes to the department head salary and benefits that would be effective the first pay period after adoption include a change to the minimum salaries for the classifications in the executive management group. They were adjusted for the difference between the minimum and the maximum to be a range of 21.53, and that was just to create continuity with other management groups. There's no budget impact for this change. There's no change to the maximum associated with this, it's just bringing the minimum up. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Berlin. Any questions among the council members? I just want to say thank you for putting this together for our unrepresented groups. They don't have a voice at the table to ask for what I think they truly deserve, which is to get paid. And we are hoping to increase revenues so that we can get more competitive pay and appreciate their patience, their dedication, their time and willingness to work for the City of West Sacramento. I know that our community greatly appreciates your service, and so I just want to say, just hang in there with us. We want to continue to, you know, do what we can. I know that, like, the health insurance, if you're having a family, can be very expensive. So we'd like to make sure that you're all taken care of and can retire comfortably. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Public comment.
Public comment. Open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment, bring it back, and I'll accept a motion to approve. All right. Mayor Potemorosco moved, and...
Early seconds.
Early seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Silpizio-Hull?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Potemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. All right. This item is approved. We'll go next to our general administration function, part two. Do we have reports from our council assignments?
Madam Mayor, would you like me to update on City School District 2x2?
Yes, you may.
You want me to do that?
Yes, you may. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. The meeting of the City School 2x2 Committee happened on August 7th here at City Hall. We chatted about opportunities to work with the school district on surplus land and how we can meet both of our organization's goals. We, at our next meeting, will be discussing more specifically summer programming and some specifics to safety having to do with routes to school and a recent safety assessment that happened. We did talk about opportunities to enhance our collaboration and communication, coming out of our conversation that we had at council about the EV charging stations, and so that's something that we will continue to work with, with this team. Madam Mayor, am I missing anything that you want to highlight?
I think you covered, I think the one thing on the surplus land, I don't, just it triggers a surplus land act whenever I hear that phrase, is, is the swapping. So for us to be able to...
The excess land swap.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Yes, council member Early?
So I have been in several meetings regarding the IAD work. I'm on the subcommittee for our Yolo County Transportation District. And it's something that we talked about the last time we were here regarding the fact that unfortunately we had not received the roughly $103 million in order to cover the probably about 50% of that project. And so we still have about half, so I think it's something around 97 million from the federal government, in which we are still waiting for Caltrans District 3 to come up with their draft EFI report, which is supposed to come out at the end of August. In the meantime, we have been trying to figure out, again, in working with Caltrans, is there a portion of the... there a portion of the project that actually could move forward? Anyone who commutes over the causeway from here to the bay, or coming back from the bay to here, to Davis, knows that it can get pretty jammed up, particularly if you're trying to go whether on the weekend or doing work hours. And so part of what this project has consisted of is expanding the causeway. So not building it out, but expanding it, and potentially putting in a toll lane both westbound and eastbound. The likelihood of being able to really get that project up in the amount of time that we have available to us, which is roughly 11 more months, is slowly dwindling, unfortunately. However, there still are options. One option would be potentially working towards a toll lane, but starting potentially with a carpooling, in which both eastbound and westbound up through Harbor and up through Richards Boulevard in Davis, expanding that to include an additional lane. Like, that's really where it gets bogged down, right? You're going from more lanes to less when you come eastbound, and the same thing goes when you're going westbound, right? You're going from more lanes to less. And that's why it can get so, so jammed and locked up. And so that's currently what we are exploring, and/or could we do a toll lane one way? So a toll lane either eastbound or a toll lane westbound? And so, again, exploring options. The last option would be to let the $97 million go. Obviously, you never want to let something like that slip through your fingers, right? When you have been granted that. But the project obviously does need to make sense, not only for our region, so our county, Yolo County, but obviously also for West Sac residents. And so that's currently what we're, what we've been meeting about fairly consistently once a week.
Wow, thank you. And I have a couple of items. Sacramento Valley Division will be hosting a cornhole tournament October 13th from 1 to 4 at Drake's, the barn in West Sacramento. So...
Who's hosting this? CalCities?
CalCities, okay. And, and it's the Sacramento Valley Division, sorry, confusing. And so you're, you're, there is a fee per person, and just wanted to announce that. You can go through CalCities and track. Now, I can also send it to our clerk and include you. And also was at the groundbreaking ceremony for the IAD's, you know, reconstructing the rehab project, so was really grateful to be able to participate and meet with the transportation director and other key dignitaries of our region to express our priorities. And that concludes my report. I do want to go next to Council Calendar, which is Ms. Berlin.
No report tonight.
City manager report?
I'll say no report, thank you.
City attorney report?
No report.
Did I miss something?
Exceed.
Adjourn. Adjourn. In memory, and then I'll... Got it, okay. Staff direction from City Council members. Future agenda item request by council? None? Okay. I would like to adjourn in the memory of Captain, Captain Thompson, the husband of former Assemblywoman Helen Thompson, and also former Yolo County supervisor. He, he's a dear friend and mentor, compassionate advocate, who passed away on July 30th, shortly after celebrating his 93rd birthday. And we have a proclamation, which was signed among the council members here, which we'll send to him. Just a little background, he has an exceptional journey, which began with the attainment of his MD degree from the UC San Francisco School of Medicine, followed by his psychiatry residency in Harvard showcasing his dedication to education and growth. Captain Thompson's impact in our community was exemplified during his tenure as the Director and Program Chief of Yolo County Mental Health Services from 1965 to 1992, where he tirelessly championed the cause of providing aid to those suffering from mental illness, fostering collaborative relationships with local physicians, and building essential resources to support those in need. And he had a visionary approach to mental health care, along with Assemblywoman Helen Thompson, who passed the Mental Health Parity Law for California, which emphasized, which they emphasized comprehensive biopsychosocial treatment, emphasizing the inclusion of families in the planning and treatment processes, where Laura's Law was also passed with the leadership of Assemblywoman Helen Thompson, thereby transforming lives and providing hope. And Captain Thompson's legacy also extends to his role as a performing artist with the Putah Creek Crawdads, where he shared his musical talents through banjo performances, captivating audiences, and spreading joy. And Captain's love for his family was evident in his commitment in attending all T-ball games, magical concerts, Little League games, and other events in the lives of his children, showcasing his unwavering dedication as a father and mentor. And he carried with him kindness, wisdom, warmth, and touched countless lives, leaving an indelible mark in our community. So with that, I would like to accept a motion to adjourn in his memory.
So moved. Early seconds.
All right. Councilmember Early moved. Councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Solpezio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Potemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. With that, we adjourn. Thank you very much.